Brian.
How do you, Mayor?
Okay, is everybody ready? Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Virginia City Council Chambers. This is a regularly scheduled city council meeting. I will call this meeting to order. Today's date is Tuesday, September 12, 2023. The time is 5:39 PM. We're starting a little bit late because we had an assessment hearing at 5 PM. And so Pam, would you please take the roll call?
Motley.
Here.
Freedle.
Here.
Paulson.
Present.
Biondich.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
Barneselli.
Here.
Cuffy.
Present. Would everyone please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We move on to item four on the agenda, which is a public forum. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience that would like to come address the council. You're welcome to do so at this time. Seeing none, we'll move to item five, which is the consent agenda. The following items will be enacted by one motion unless a councilor or citizen of the city of Virginia requests that the item be considered separately. Item 5.1 is the approval and correction of the minutes of 5.1A, the regular meeting that was held on October 22, 2023, the public hearing that was held on September 5, 2023, and the special meeting that was held on September 5, 2023. Item 5.2 is the adoption of finance resolution number 23-017, the schedule of bills. Item 5.3 is approved pay estimate number two from Lancy Enterprises for the Alcott Park entrance project in the amount of $76,665. Item 5.4 is approved pay estimate number one from Masaba Batuminis for the Silver Lake Trail Phase II project in the amount of $26,089.37. Item 5.5 is approved travel request from Brian Maloney to attend the TASER instructor course in Medina, Minnesota at a cost of $631. Rescheduled from Blaine, Minnesota. This is a train-the-trainer course for their police officer licensing. 5.6 is approve the one-day transit merchant license for Michelle Fowler doing business as Michelle's Doghouse Grill. Item 5.7 has been pulled from the consent agenda by the fire department. Item 5.8 approve the one-day transit merchant license for Father Brandon Moravits doing business as the Holy Spirit Church. These are the items on the consent agenda for today, looking for council action.
We'll move approval of the consent agenda as listed.
A council Freedle moves to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there support? Support by Council Barneselli. Is there any further discussion? Council Biondich.
I'd like to pull 5.5, please.
Council Biondich requests to pull item 5.5. So looking for motion to approve items 5.1, 5.3, 5.2, 5.3, 5.4, 5.6, and 5.8.
Moved.
Moved by Council Motley. Is there support? I'm sorry. We had a motion on the floor already, but we're just pulling item. So the first motion stands with the exception of item 5.5. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item 5.5 approve the travel request for Ryan Maloney to attend the TASER instructor course in Medina, Minnesota at a cost of $631.90. This is a rescheduled training that was originally scheduled in Blaine, Minnesota. Council Biondich.
Thank you. In light of our financial budget meeting yesterday, I will not be supporting this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Pam?
Mayor, this was already approved at a council meeting prior. For him to attend, yes. Because he didn't get in the class in time, he had to go to Blaine. That's why it's on here again.
Okay. I didn't know why we had it on this agenda if it's already been.
Okay. Yes, because he had to go to Blaine now instead of the previous place.
So there is a motion on the floor, looking for a motion to adopt item 5.5. Or not?
I will move to approve the change in venue.
Council Johnson moves to approve the travel request for Ryan Maloney to attend the TASER instructor course in Medina, Minnesota at a cost of $631.90. This is item 5.5 on the agenda. Is there support? Support by Council Freedle. Is there any further discussion? Council Paulson.
Mayor, and I did have that question. I remembered, I think remembered approving this. What was the, do we have the difference? Is it much difference dollar-wise? Sorry to put you on the spot. Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate that.
I'm sure it was either really close or just a little bit less. It was actually a little closer than the other one was.
Okay. Thank you.
It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. That completes the consent agenda. Item six, appearances. We have no one scheduled to appear before the council today. This is another opportunity for anyone from the general public who is attending today that would like to address the council. You're welcome to do so at this time. Seeing none, we'll move to item number seven, which is unfinished business. There's a little issue with respect to unfinished business. Item 7.1 has already been stricken as unfinished business, so we won't be discussing that, which is the property at 410 Fifth Street South. The rental code ordinance 7.3, which has also been taken care of, and the Iron Trail Motors contract under 7.4 has also been taken care of. What's, is it 7.2, the clinic lease still on the agenda? So we're looking for, as unfinished business, keeping our thumb on the pulse of the clinic lease as we're moving forward with discussions with Essentia about the acquisition of the Essentia Clinic. Do we have any more information with respect to communications with Essentia on this clinic lease? Have you heard, had any more common conversations? Brian, have you?
I have not.
Okay, thank you. So this continues to remain an unfinished business item as we move forward with our discussions about the acquisition from Essentia for the clinic. Item number eight, discussion items. Number eight, point one is adopt the resolution ordering improvement in preparing the final plans for the 2024 Street Alley and Infrastructure Project Amendment Number One.
Moved.
Moved to approve by Council Freedle. Is there support?
Support.
By Council Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.2 is adopt the resolution for change order number one for the Minnesota Department of Transportation for additional work on the culvert repair at Highway 53 North, which is right at the 18th Street intersection.
I will move the resolution of the change order for $1,000.
Yeah, Council Johnson moves to approve. Is there support?
All support. And for discussion, I wasn't aware that there was a cost incurrence on this, but it's $1,000 on top of the original bid.
Yeah. Yeah, it's supported by Council Freedle. Matt, could you give us a little more insight on that? This is like a project where the part of the project is on state property, the other is on city property, and so is a collaborative. Matt?
Yeah, I'll actually share some good news with you. So that $1,000, there's two change orders, actually, and that's the next item is the other one. There's a net deduct to the city, actually. So the two change orders that are in front of you, the one that's there right now, the $1,000 one, the city is actually only responsible for 30% of that, so roughly $300. So approving that one would be a net increase of $330. And when you get to the next item, you're going to find that actually you're only responsible for 30% of that one as well, which is going to actually be a negative number, which between the two of them is going to give you a net decrease of about 100 bucks. So there were some changes on that project that MINDOT was running. MINDOT approved. Everything, I reviewed it all. I've talked with them. Everything looks appropriate. And in the end, it'll end up, between the two change orders, will be a deduct to the city. So about 100 bucks. So I'd recommend approving this one and subsequently, when you get to the next item.
Thank you, Matt. So it has been moved and supported to adopt the resolution for change order number one from the Minnesota Department of Transportation for the work on the culvert repair project. We have clarification from Matt Reed, which is recommended by. Is there further discussion on this matter? Item 8.2. Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.3 is adopt the resolution for change order number two from the Department of Transportation for the reduction of aggregate needs on the project of Highway 53.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Council Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Council Motley. Is there any further discussion? Council Biondich.
Matt, I appreciate when you come forward and give us good news. I appreciate the clarification on these change orders and that you explain to us that it's actually a benefit to us. So thank you.
Thank you, Council Biondich. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8.4 is a recommendation of commission appointments from a meeting that was held on August 28, 2003. Item 8.4A of the appointment of Isaac Brink to the Human Rights Commission for the remainder of the three-year term ending January 31, 2024. We take these individually? Okay, looking for a motion.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Council Motley. Is there support? By Council Barneselli. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.4, appoint Gerald Williams to the Human Rights Commission for the remainder of a three-year term ending 1/31 of 25.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Council Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
By Council Freedle. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.4B, appoint Todd Swenson to the Human Rights Commission for the remainder of a three-year term ending in 1/31, 2025.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Council Motley. Is there support? By Council Freedle. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Next item, appoint Tim Young to the Human Rights Commission for the remainder of a three-year term ending in 1/31 of 2026. Moved to approve by Council Biondich and supported by Council Freedle. Is there any further discussion? Council Johnson.
Mayor, will we be notifying them of the meeting, first meeting in October, then via? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. And item 8.4, next item is appoint Garrison Hale to the Public Utilities Commission for the remainder of a three-year term ending January 31, 2026.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Council Motley and supported by Council Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8.5, adopt the resolution for Rock Ridge Youth Hockey Association to conduct a raffle on February 3, 2024 at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. I know we approved this before, but now they've changed the date for reasoning, for scheduling purposes. So they're now making the request for the raffle on February 3.
Moved to approve.
Moved to approve by Council Paulson. Is there support? By Council Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.6, adopt the first reading of ordinance amending Chapter 6, Section 6.33, subdivision 1 of the city code of the city of Virginia entitled Tobacco.
So moved.
So moved by Council Motley for the first reading. Is there support?
Support.
By Council Barneselli. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.7 is adopt the resolution to apply for and accept funds from the IRRB for the Silver Lake Project Phase II-B.
So moved.
Moved by Council Johnson and supported by Council Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Council Paulson. No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Move to item nine, committed reports. Item 9.1, the committee hall meeting that was held last Tuesday. We'll turn this part of our meeting over to our city administrator, Britt C. Bennetts. Britt?
Thank you. At the committee of the whole meeting that was on last Tuesday, Matt Reed from SCH was present to discuss the change order request for an extension of the completion date of the Alcott Park Entrance Project. It was moved and supported to approve change order number one, which extends the substantial completion date to September 15, 2023, for the Alcott Park Entrance Project, and there is no cost.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Council Johnson. Is there support? By Council Biondich. Further discussion? Almost done. Just going to need some lettering, and it's looking really good. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Question, Council Paulson.
Oh, wait, maybe it's for, I think my items is the next one, is it? My items for the next one.
Okay. All those in favor of the Alcott Park change order? No further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries.
Matt also discussed? Meet the reconstruction of the sanitary sewer main that runs into their current high school. Both storm and the sewer lines were televised. The storm sewer is in good condition, and if something happens down the road, it can be lined. The sanitary sewer line is not in good condition and needs to be replaced. In our packets, we had an estimate from Kraus Anderson to complete the work at a cost of $83,375. We had tabled it to the committee of the whole budget meeting for further discussion, which we did not talk about yesterday. Then we did move it back to this meeting to proceed with the sewer replacement project at the current high school location with the approved quote from TNT Construction in the amount of $83,375.
Is this a contribution from the public utilities, or is this our entire requirement? Is this a city responsibility altogether?
This is the sewer lines. This is the city side of the utilities.
And this is the amount of $83,375?
Correct.
Thank you. Where's this? How are we going to fund this? Council, I'm sorry. I'll retract my question. Council Paulson.
You're on my wavelength.
Okay, there you go.
That's why I believe that we had tabled it, and I think I'd had some extra, or some questions, Matt, on the TNT supplemental contract is between Kraus Anderson and North Star Elementary. And so do we clear that up? Is there, are we paying the Rock Ridge back for this if we have the money?
Matt?
Good evening. Yeah, so Kraus Anderson is doing that as a change order through their contract with the school, and then the school would directly bill the city for reimbursement.
Okay. And then I guess the next question is, was this a budgeted item? I think we were told last time it was not. So how should we proceed forward? With the funding of this? And I understand, Matt, I totally understand. If we're doing it, we're in there. It's got to be done. But this is one of those expenses that was not budgeted for, and I really am concerned. I don't know if that could be addressed, Mayor.
Well, you know, I guess I would like to see if there's a way that we can contact the IRRB, because this is a school project. Funding came for this school from the IRRB, from the School Trust Fund and other sources, including the bonding from the state of Minnesota. So because this is an improvement and because the school is being redeveloped, this creates an issue for us, and now this is the opportunity for it to be replaced because it's no longer under the old school. So as this being part of the services, which is on school property, is there a way that we can apply for a grant from the IRRB to pay to cover the cost of this because it's on the school property?
Actually, under, not vacated Third Street North or Third Street South.
Well, it has not been vacated.
Not been vacated. We actually own that property. We own the sewer main. It's a main, not a sewer service line. So it's the main that connects Fifth Avenue to Sixth Avenue.
I want to just.
But I do agree we should ask IRRB.
That would be the same question. Is it, could we apply for or check with the IRRB, see if they can help cover the cost of this? Council Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, again, Matt, so if this would be a change order submitted by TNT to Kraus Anderson ultimately, and it's Rock Ridge that is going to be approving it, would be the school board approving this change order, but would there not need to be a process happening between the city of Virginia and the school board, actually? I mean, how can the school board approve this? And we haven't said if we are going to approve it or not?
I don't think they would. I think they would wait until the city approved it, and then it would ultimately go to the school board. It's a formality for them, if they're going to get reimbursed, right? So if, I don't think they would do anything with it until the city approved it.
Okay, so maybe we need to move on that, because I don't want to hold up a project either. Because this is happening currently, right?
Yeah, they're, well, you can see, the demo's just about done in that area. So they said that early October, they would probably be ready to start constructing it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
May I ask if we're going to, if we do want to move forward, that if we also pass a motion to waive the written resolution to apply for a grant for this, for IRRB?
I would rather have the answer if we would be qualified for a grant before approving. Sure. Got it. Thank you.
Okay, so. Council Johnson?
I will make a motion to approve the change order contingent upon funding from IRRB.
Council Johnson makes a motion to approve the resolution and the quote and proceed with the sewer replacement project with a caveat that we receive a grant from the IRRB.
Mayor, I guess I would just leave it at a grant in case there's other options out there as well.
As a grant.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification. As a grant. Is there support for that? Is there support?
All support for discussion.
Support by Council Freedle for discussion. Further discussion, Council Freedle?
Obviously, we need $83,375 to get this accomplished. And it's quite timely right now because, like you say, the deconstruction or demolition is almost completed in that area. Has that sewer line been televised, scoped, and determined that it's a must to be replaced? Or a preference to?
Matt?
It's.
Like, can it be lined as opposed to?
We looked at that option, and it was not a great candidate for lining. Could it be lined? Maybe. But you may end up with an undesirable product when it's done. It was questionable. So it was just, it made more sense since they're right there and the ground is opened up just to replace it, rather than take a chance, have them put everything back together, try to line it, and then not have the product that we want in the end, and then they have to dig it up and do it anyway.
So pursuing them, oh, I'm sorry. I'm not speaking.
Thank you.
So pursuing this grant is going to be taking time to do so? Or is that something you can get by tomorrow?
If I can get the council to make a motion to authorize me to submit for a grant, and the signature is required for it, I can get it submitted tomorrow.
Okay. All good. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Freedle. Council Motley.
Can I hear the motion again, please?
Moved by Council Johnson, supported by Council Freedle to adopt the resolution to approve the quote and proceed with the sewer replacement project at the current high school with the quote from TNT Construction in the amount of $83,375 contingent upon receiving a grant to help fund the project.
Okay, thank you. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
I will move to waive the resolution to apply for said grants.
Council Johnson moves to waive the written resolution so we can apply for the grant.
Support.
Supported by Council Paulson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries.
Well, Christiansen from People's Service was present at the meeting to discuss the wastewater treatment plant upgrade and the wastewater treatment plant aeration diffusers. Christiansen noted that diffusers are failing and they're causing poor mixing in the aeration. Two quotes were received, and it was a recommendation to approve the quote from SSI Aeration in the amount of $15,200 plus labor costs of approximately $3,000 to replace the aerators, which will be paid back to us within a year due to the cost savings and improved chemical efficiency of the FX300.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Council Johnson. Is there support?
All support.
By Council Paulson. Is there any further discussion? I don't know how many these mandates that we're going to have that we can't fund from the state, but this is just a result of chemicals that need to be done, diffusers that are breaking down because of some of the stuff we have to put in this wastewater treatment center, and now we have to put everything together. So it's another, it's necessary to do so, but it's a little frustrating. Council Biondich.
And is there money in the, is this coming out of the sewer fund for the payment of this?
Yes.
And there is money in that fund?
There currently is. I just sent out the financials today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moved and supported. Further discussion? Council Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I guess I was just recalling from when Paul was here, he made it clear that if we did make this expenditure, that it would pay for itself within the first year. So for energy efficiency improvements.
Yes. Thank you. Yes, Council Paulson. Thank you. Who has been moved and supported? Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approve. Opposed. Motion carries.
Next item on the agenda, we approved the quote for the SCADA replacement at the wastewater treatment plant from In Control at a cost of $44,028. And I did have, asked Pam to do some research on this one. Pam, did you find out anything?
No, they have not responded yet.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to ask the council, we have a question on this quote, and I'm going to ask the council to table this one until further information comes forward.
Okay. Moved to table by Council Paulson, supported by Council Motley. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.[1658.62] Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
The next item was moved and supported to remove from the committee whole agenda on September 5th and add to the next committee the whole agenda on September 19th the following items: To discuss approval of the proposed rental rate increase for the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. Discuss approval of the proposed rental rate increase for park buildings. Approve the quote for the purchase of the new camera system at the library from Permar, the Monta 12,061, and then the set interview committees for new positions.
Thank you.
My computer, I'm using paper today.
You want a motion for that?
I don't think we need one. Nope, that was just the discussion.
Let's ask for a motion.
I'll move.
Moved by Counselor Paulson, supported by Counselor Motley. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Mr. Brian Silver, Parks and Recreation Director, was present to discuss the tree policy that the Park and Rec Commission has been working on at this time. It was moved and supported to direct staff to set up an informational meeting regarding the proposed tree policy. Moved.
Moved by Counselor Motley and supported by Counselor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the resolution to apply for and receive funds from the Minnesota State Historical Society to hang the Dwayne Byers mural at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. Moved.
Moved by Counselor Motley. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the proposed facilities use agreement for one year with ISD 2909 Rock Ridge Public Schools for 2023 to 2024 hockey season with the recommended pricing.
Moved. Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson. Is there support? Is there support? Support by Counselor Freedle. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to allow the Park and Recreation Director to begin negotiations with ISD 2909 for the 2425 school year.
Moved. Moved by Counselor Johnson, supported by Counselor Motley. Further discussion, Counselor Freedle.
So to begin negotiations on an annual basis or more so?
This is a one-year contract that they finally...
We're going to renew it one year at a time, or are we looking to increase that?
We, every time we go to negotiate, we try to do a three-year, and they've come back with the negotiation process with the one-year.
Thank you, Counselor Freedle. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Commission to name the new stage at the Klein Coopletty Building to the Silver Lake Stage. Moved.
Moved by Counselor Motley, supported by Counselor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Did have a request to waive fees for the use of the Klein Coopletty Building, and I am happy to report that we did find them a space and we did find somebody to donate this. It was not at Klein Coopletty. They're going to work, they're going to come here to City Hall, and there is a donator that's going to pay for the space for the Girl Scout troop to meet here at City Hall. We did move in support to request staff to look into setting a policy for discussion for nonprofit rental fees for city buildings.
Moved. Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson. Is there support? By Counselor Barneselli. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I just can't support going forward with doing any more cuts to, or different rates for any of our city buildings. So I guess I'm just, I'm not comfortable doing that until we understand where we're at with our budget for 2024. So that's why I stand on that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I don't have a problem moving forward for staff to look into setting a policy, but approving it would be another matter. So I'd like to hear what they have to say. So I know exactly where you're coming from there, Counselor Paulson. Has it been moved and supported? Further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please. Pam.
Beyondich. Johnson.
Aye.
Barneselli. Huffy.
Aye.
Motley.
Yes.
Freedle.
Aye.
Paulson.
No.
Motion passes five-two.
Edwards from Carl Sanderson was present to discuss the Iron Trail Motors Event Center construction project and stated the project is now complete, and there was a savings of twelve thousand, five hundred and one dollars and twenty-nine cents. Thus, he brought forward change order number eight for the Iron Trail Motors Event Center within a reduction of twelve thousand, five oh one twenty-nine.
Moved. Moved by Counselor Freedle. Is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Mr. Brian Silver discussed the picture of Steve Sirditch that was hanging at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. Silver informed us that the family would like to make a formal request to have the photo returned to them. We asked the attorney to look at proper language and request the picture to be returned to the Sirditches. Attorney Lindsay.
Thank you. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please, Mr. Lindsay.
So the, I've been looking for some additional information on this because that additional information may make some difference. So as I understand this, it was a framed photograph of Mr. Sirditch, and as the family is asking for its return, it sounds to me like it may have been on loan to the city. And what I was looking for was some information, and I understand we have a hard time really finding any about where this photograph or where this picture was created. Because if it was something that was created or originated with the Sirditch family, and they've just simply requested its return, then at this point, I think the council by resolution could return the photograph to them, simply thanking them for allowing us to display it in our public buildings or to have it for a period of time. If, on the other hand, it's something that the city has created ourselves, and what they're asking for is not a return of the photograph but to be gifted the photograph, then we may have a separate process where we'd have to declare a surplus that it has no continuing value to the city and move forward that way. But if it is something that was simply loaned to the city that we may display it in our public buildings with the understanding that at some point it may be returned or requested to be returned, then the city is within its legal right to simply thank them for allowing us to display it and return it.
And I did do a little bit of research, and I don't have any documented evidence to show this, but it's a picture of Mr. Steve Sirditch, who was a graduate of Virginia High School, and it's a picture of him as a player in the 1976 USA Olympic Hockey Team. And those photographs were taken after 1976, obviously. And many of the players had those black and white photographs taken. It wouldn't have been taken by the City of Virginia. It would have been taken by someone else and given it to the City of Virginia. So that being said, I concur with your stand on that. So, I mean, from my perspective, and I'll be, I want to be totally above board, upfront here, that, you know, we went to school together. He's been my friend for many, many years. You know, we're classmates, all those kind of things. So I'm not making, I mean, I can make and support the decision based upon that. Only fact that this is, we have a color photograph version of that that's been placed permanently at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. So this will just be something returned to him and his family for posterity purposes. So...
Mayor, I'll make a motion to return the black and white photo to the Sirditch family.
Moved by Counselor Freedle. Is there support for that?
I would support with a letter of gratitude for letting us use it.
Thank you. Supported by Counselor Johnson with the caveat to put a letter of gratitude to the Sirditch family. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. It was moved and supported to approve the use of the city parking lot behind Riders along Fourth Avenue and First Street South to hold a benefit on Saturday, September 23rd, 2023, from 2:00 to 8:00 p.m. Moved to approve.
Moved to approve by Counselor Paulson. Is there support? By Counselor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the resolution to hire George Rendell as a dual-role firefighter EMT.
Moved. It was moved to approve by Counselor Johnson. Is there support? Support by Counselor Motley. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Department has asked us to remove item P. They will come to us with another date with the information. It was moved and supported to approve the access use license agreement with RGGS London Minerals for ditching. Moved.
Moved approved by Counselor Motley. And is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Paulson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the resolution declaring Public Works Department items as surplus.
Moved. Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson and supported by Counselor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the Cooperative Fire Protection Agreement with the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, Division of Forestry, and the Virginia Fire Department.
Moved. Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson. Is there support?
Support for discussion.
By Counselor Freedle for discussion. Further discussion, Counselor Freedle.
Just a quick question. Should we do any kind of collaborative effort with regard to firefighting? Would we be reimbursed for that, or would we incur expense for that?
We would be reimbursed, and this agreement is what sets the reimbursement rate that they give us. And so it changes periodically based on what their percentages are, how they allocate funding.
Thank you. It's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. No further items from that meeting.
Thank you, Britt. Move to item 10, Commissioner Lina's on reports. Is there any counsel that would like to give a Commissioner Lina's on report this evening? Seeing none. Move to department head reports. Department heads. We'll start with Britt. Anything else to add under other items?
Yes, the Food Truck Festival is this Saturday, starting at 11 o'clock downtown Virginia. Come on down. We have 28, I believe, food vendors, including the businesses that are downtown that are going to be participating. So it should be a good time. Come hungry. Lots of food. Weather looks okay, so.
Excellent. Very good. Thank you. Brian, anything from legal?
Nothing more, Mayor. Thank you.
Pam, any announcements? Jerry? Jenny?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one update on from planning and zoning last night. We did have two appeals come forward to planning and zoning. One, and they'll be before you, you know, for consideration, but one was for, one was approved for the extension of that appeal of a property maintenance code violation for 45 days to get that work done. They're continuing to work on that, so that was a good thing. And then the other one, no work was being done, and no one showed up for that appeal. So we're continuing with the compliance process on that. And then additionally, we are continuing to work on ordinance amendments, so just an update on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jenny. Okay, any other reports? Jody Kryvanowski, our library director. Jody, welcome.
Evening. So just a couple of different things. So along with the Food Truck Festival this weekend, go to the Iron Trail Motor Event Center. It is the annual book sale for the friends. I left there about an hour and a half ago. I do believe there are close to 90 tables of stuff. So the sale starts Thursday, 10:00 to 6:00, Friday, 10:00 to 5:00, Saturday, 10:00 to 5:00, and then on Sunday, 10:00 to 2:00. If you're an educator, you're a student, you get free books. So if you need books for your classroom, go to the library, go to the book sale. We pretty much have everything. Fiction, nonfiction, kids' books, puzzles. I saw a painting. They weren't done yet. So they just had finished accepting donations today. So the library will be closed on Saturday. All of the library staff are putting in shifts at the book sale on Saturday. But that's that part of it. Next week, we have events. So our September is packed with all sorts of good things. Though this week, just to highlight, in partnership with the Fire Department, we have done one of our truck rides so far from one of our summer reading with the partnership with the schools. So Parkview, North Star, and Marquette are all, the students that won those are getting their rides. Weather dependent, and of course, depending on whether it's an emergency, they should have them all done by next week. You can see pictures on our Facebook page, on the Fire, and also on the Virginia Fire Department page. The park parties are happening probably this week, too. That is also something that we partnership with the schools. Now, next week, we have baby story time on Tuesday morning. Also, if you need to know more about Libby, drop by. We're having a Tech Tuesday from 2:00 to 3:00, and we can help you learn about Libby, which helps you access the eBooks that are available through the Arrowhead Library System. And not only eBooks, but e-magazines and e-audio. We have a craft afternoon on the 20th, which is Wednesday, for after-school programming, and that's going to start, I do believe, at 3:00 because when kids are getting back into Virginia, so we've adjusted that time. We have an author visit on the 21st. She's a returning author. She is from the Hibbing area, and she is visiting local libraries. Her name is Mary Ann Art, and I do believe the book title is Rattying on a Fish. So it's set in 1905, so if you want to come talk to an author, come to the library next Thursday. We have family story time on Friday, the 22nd. And on Saturday, the 23rd, we will have block building. So we put out all of our blocks for the littles and for the big kids, and come in and block build from 10:30 until close. And I think that's all for the next week. The following week, we do have another really big event. This is sponsored by the Arrowhead Library System. The state of Minnesota, or I should say, the Minnesota Friends, do an annual event, and there's book awards. So we are one of the stops for the, it's a moving word event, so we get three of the authors, and that event is on the 28th at 1:00. All of these are on our website. If you have any questions, please give us a call at 218-748-7525.
748-7525.
Yes.
Thank you, Jody, very much. Okay, Counselor Johnson.
Mayor, I was there yesterday sorting kids' books, and I took as many as I could carry to my kids. But there's a phenomenal amount of books, and they're quality books. They're not somebody's throwaways. So it should be a great event to help raise funds for our public library.
Thank you. Okay, next, item 12, council reports. Any councilor have to report they'd like to give this evening? Counselor Johnson.
I appreciate the opportunity. I just, with the budget and the levy talk and everything, I've been hearing some things, and I wanted to set the record straight on a couple of items. And the first thing I ask is that people don't take my lack of panic as a lack of concern. We have been talking about the budget for a long time. When we gave raises to our public safety folks a year and a half, two years ago, we knew we would have to find money in 2024 to help pay them. So that's why I'm not panicking. I'm starting, I feel an element of blame, and I want to, again, reassure the staff and the citizens that I accept full responsibility for where we are. I've been here for seven years. I've been passing levies at 3%, 2%. So I do accept that responsibility, and I do understand that moving forward, it's going to be a bigger levy, which does impact me. I own a home in town. I pay taxes. So I want to clarify that out up a little bit. I was not surprised or shocked by anything that's come out in the last two weeks in the audit, none of that. It's all been put out to us. We got another report today. Every week we get reports, or every two weeks we get reports. We get financial status. We get all of that stuff. All of those things are things that I know, I've known what's going on. I understand what's going on. So my goal as we move forward is, one, to find the harmony in what we need to do. It was great having the input from the public last night, having ideas. The staff have been coming up with phenomenal ideas to figure out how do we find the harmony and the balance to move forward as a city. For me, I'm not making decisions about today or tomorrow, or even next year. I'm trying to make decisions for my children so that when they are sitting here, my daughter wants to be mayor someday. When she's sitting in this room, I want her to be able to make healthy decisions based on what we did. Some of the stuff that we're working on as a council is deferred maintenance. We have dump trucks that are welding, on welding, on welding, on, because we have not purchased stuff. And so as we're moving forward, that's something I want to try to avoid for our future, for our kids and our grandkids. Because we are trying to clean up stuff that happened before us. The amount at the end of the levy and all that proposed stuff, we did that last year. We did it the year before. There's nothing cataclysmic, in my opinion, about what's moving forward that we haven't been dealing with since I've been on the council for seven years. Every year, we adjust it. We do different things to create and find solutions. So I just need, I needed to get that out and let people know that I pride myself in not freaking out about stuff. I'm a parent. I'm an educator. I'm a city councillor. And one of the things that I think is best for me as I move forward is to stop and just listen for a while and really process what's happening. And I think that we are on the right path. I appreciate the time that we're putting in. I don't ever remember having more than one levy meeting in seven years. So that we've had more than one levy meeting, and we're having discussions about it, I think is extremely healthy. And I echo what Counselor Freedle said yesterday about the healthy discourse and the very civil tone that was in this room last night. And I appreciate that. And so as we're moving forward, I am open for discussion. Just because I don't agree with you or I don't think it's the right answer doesn't mean I'm not going to listen to you. But that's why there's seven of us here. We all come from a different perspective. We all come from different backgrounds. We all currently are living in different places that help us represent our community in a healthy way. places that help us represent our community in a healthy way, I want to make sure that our community is welcoming, that people, I'm so happy that the Girl Scouts found a place, and that someone's willing to help out with that, we're a city, we're meant to be a community organization that supports our community, our community, our employees, they are our, our citizens, they're people who come into town on a regular basis, there's five, six thousand people that come into Virginia, if not more, every day, who don't live here, that spend money here, so we're, I, I look at making sure I'm, I'm being cognizant of all of those things, so, I, I look forward to us getting to a place that's a reasonable, a reasonable solution as we move forward this year, knowing that next year we're gonna have to have a similar conversation, and next year after that, we're going to have a similar conversation, so, thank you for the opportunity, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Johnson. I have a couple of things, so, first is, I got a call from Dennis Hendricks, Dennis Hendricks, a former employee of United States Steel, he lives on Fifth Avenue South, we had been talking over the course of the last six months about the ATV trails, and how they're trying to get some segments in, in the north part of the area through some of the mining company properties, and he has met with US Steel, and US Steel has acquiesced on some of their property with RGGS to try to punch a trail through, through their property, they also are gonna include in that agreement, not just ATVs, UTVs, but also snowmobiles in the wintertime, so I have directed Mr. Hendricks to contact our city administrator, Britt C. Bennet, he may have already contacted you, Britt, about laying out what that might look like, the mapping with respect to that, how that segment would work, and the, and the guarantees and the requirements that US Steel would ask from us, or from the ATV club moving forward, so, part of that is, is with respect to what you brought forth, Counselor Motley, and so we're working toward that goal and objective, and, and hopefully we'll have some, something to share with the council once Dennis Hendricks and, and Britt to work out the mapping portion of it, and what's required by US Steel, so, thank you for that. And my last item is, is, you know, many city councils and states and senators and all over the United States always, you know, yesterday was September eleventh, and we did talk about September eleventh yesterday because we had a budget meeting and, and a levy meeting, and not the appropriate time to bring that up, I guess, so we're bringing it up today at the council meeting, we all remember September eleventh, the Twin Towers, the attack on this country. No proclamation, no words, no quotes can accurately describe the pain and the suffering this country has borne since September eleventh, two thousand one. We should never forget that day, yesterday was that day. We, as a citizen of a community, a person who lives in the United States of America, should be proud of where we live, should be proud of our country, should be proud of the flag that sits to my right, proud to be part and be have the freedoms that we have as a result of those who made the ultimate sacrifices, any attack on our country is an attack on all of us, so on behalf of all of us here today, we remember September eleventh, and we shall never forget it. Okay, thank you. No other items that come before the council today, we will stand adjourned to our next council meeting, which is scheduled for Tuesday, September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three, at five-thirty P.M. here in the council chambers, where we all meet, we'll be meeting before that for another budget meeting, levy meeting, so we stand adjourned, everybody, thanks for coming, have a safe evening, we're adjourned at six-thirty P.M.